Okay, we will order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 1st, 2020. I had asked that you all please rise for a brief moment of invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, in my many years of delivering invocations at the beginning of our meeting, I perhaps have never felt a greater need to say something of significance and afforded to it as I do tonight with this invocation. And I just ask that a special, special blessing be showered upon our nation and our state and our community and our citizens and all those folks of our United States, that as we work ourselves through multiple challenges at the moment, from the coronavirus to the tragic incidents that occurred in Minneapolis last week, that we together work to find understanding and compassion and concern and rebuilding of our way of life and our ideas as we go forth as a nation. Our country has been great. It's been grand. It has been the leader of the world, and we certainly want to keep it that way. And we are in need as a people to work ourselves through this, coming to the realization that all races, religions, colors, and creeds have an equal opportunity in our world, and that that is what is the foundation of the United States of America. So we just ask that a special blessing be brought upon all of us to have our world reach that realization that once and for all, it is time for us as a world to recognize the integrity and citizenship of each and every man and woman who we have within our country. Tonight is also, I want to ask for a special blessing to be showered upon all those from our community who are serving us in the public safety arena. These are very challenging times for them, but please to fire our public workspeople, and certainly the people who are working in the city's administration. We are challenged, perhaps, to agree that we've never known before. We just ask for a special blessing of understanding and direction as the city council and the staff go forth and try to deal with the issues that are before us. We just ask that, at the end of the day, that we've made Batavia a greater and grander place to hand off to future generations. And we ask for all these very, very special blessings tonight. Amen. Should I join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
I ask the city clerk to put the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Knop.
Here.
Chantet. 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 Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uhr.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
And I regain my CEO. I'm here.
Thank you. That's everyone.
All 14 are on the call. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
So we have, obviously, the entire city council is here. Thank you to each and every one of you for being here tonight at this very important meeting. And we have, obviously, the necessary quorum to conduct business. As a reminder, I want to ask everyone to please speak into the microphone as this is being recorded for BATV. And I just ask that you all speak up so that they can, everything can be heard and recorded soundly on their recordings. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have some?
Your Honor, I have two items. After the mayor's report, we have an executive session to add. And then also, I'd like to move item 11. I'm going to move that to the consent agenda under item K.
Okay, do I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the changes as outlined by Alderman Chantet?
Dan, so moved.
Second.
Hey, I can't see all of you, so I'm not sure who's, Dan, Chantet made the motion, and who, Rizzato seconded, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uhr.
Aye.
Serone.
Here. Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Okay, the motion for the changes and the approval of the, except the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and an absent. Alderman Chantet, do you want to make the, read the approvals for the items that are on the consent agenda as amended?
Surely, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes for March 24th, April 14th, and April 28th, 2020. The 2020 Post Issuance Compliance Report, and for approval, the May 19th 2020 payroll, the amount of $4,448.97, the May 29th payroll, and the amount of $885,653.11, the accounts payable check register, and the amount of $1,146,228.93, the city council minutes for May 4th and May 18th, 2020, the April 2020 City Council Financial Report, the Cow Executive Session Minutes for March 10th, 2020, Resolution 20-74-R, accepting a deed of dedication for Main Street at 1033 Main Street, Resolution 20-65-R, authorizing execution of a low-interest loan for public water supply with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the amount not to exceed $860,000. Resolution 20-66-R, authorizing execution of low-interest loan for wastewater with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed $850,000. And item K, that is Resolution 20-75-R, awarding a grant under the Downtown Signage Assistance Grant Program within the Downtown Historic District for Soma Studio at 5 North River Street. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Knop.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Knop, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uhr.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda is amended is a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, and an absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? I guess not.
We might direct people that if they are an attendee at the meeting, that they have the ability to raise their hand next to their name on the, it's an icon on their screen if they wish to participate.
Okay.
However, I don't see anyone raising their hands.
Okay. Let's move then to item number eight, which is a report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. Do we have somebody this evening?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. This is Margaret Perot with the Batavia Chamber. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. The Batavia Chamber is well aware of the climate in our town, and we are continuing to work hard to keep our chamber members informed and help our communities survive the impact of COVID-19, and support peaceful protesters, and protect our local businesses. I know we are community leaders, conveners, and trusted voices. We are motivated to use our strength and knowledge to help. I am in close contact with our neighboring chambers and regional chamber execs, and we are sharing resources and ideas to help us hold our communities together. In the upcoming month, the Chamber will continue to offer networking opportunities along with webinars for our members so they are educated on what resources are available to them. Some of our upcoming events are Friday, June 5th, we have our collaborative counseling effort for Batavia. Wednesday, June 3rd, at 8:00 a.m., we have our Chamber Non-for-Profit Forum. On Thursday, June 4th, at 11:00 a.m., we have our Fox Valley Chambers Mega Mixer. Wednesday, June 10th, at 8:00 a.m., we have our Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. That's our morning networking. This time, it's sponsored by the Small Business Development Center at Wobunzi. On Thursday, June 11th, at 11:00 a.m., we have a Labor Law Event webinar focusing on workers' comp and unemployment insurance. On Wednesday, June 17th, at 4:30 p.m., we have our networking, evening networking for everyone. On Tuesday, June 23rd, at 11:30 a.m., we have our B-Web, Batavia Women in Business Zoom Luncheon. There will be a speaker. Her name is Erin Marcus. Her presentation will be called "Conquering Your Business: Be in Charge, Take Action, and Get Results." We also, I mention each time I come to the city council, that we will still be hosting our annual golf outing. That will be on Friday, August 28th. We're really looking forward to that. Please see our website for additional information for any of these events, and I request that you follow the Chamber on Facebook to keep up with pertinent information. The Chamber also oversees multiple interest groups to help facilitate sharing of ideas and resources with others that are in the same situation. Last week, we facilitated a forum for restaurant owners and retailers. Another group, called the Batavia Counselors Collaboration, meets weekly to share information, concerns, and finding ways to help in our community. This group is currently working with BATV to record stress and anxiety management strategies. They are also working on a program to help people focus not on the things they cannot do right now, but the things they can do right now. This is a new program that is called Batavia Can. So please be on the lookout for the unveiling from this group soon. The Chamber is also excited about kicking off our Chamber Bucks, which is a citywide gift certificate program to help our local businesses. These are gift certificates in $10 denominations that can be used at any participating business in Batavia. They can be purchased over the phone or in person from the Chamber, and can be used like cash at our local businesses. Please call ahead, please call our office ahead so I know that you're coming. This is just a great way to support our local businesses and keep our money local. The Batavia Chamber is a conduit for information for how our businesses can get aid, and I will continue to advocate for what businesses need. The Batavia Reconnected Economic Revival Committee is a committee that is meeting weekly to talk about how to assist businesses in the current economic crisis. The committee is a partnership with the City of Batavia, Batavia Main Street, and additional leaders from our business community. We have started a new initiative called Batavia Reconnected to show Batavia's resilience to the impact of the pandemic. The theme is that Batavia can stay connected through this hardship. We are stronger together. To that end, I am requesting help from the city to support our local businesses. I would like to ask the city council tonight to consider earmarking funds that were provided for Gateway Improvement Grants and reallocate them to the Batavia Reconnected COVID Response Small Business Grant Funds. These funds can ensure that businesses, employees, and customers will have confidence for health and safety as they support local businesses in Batavia. I'm requesting that city council consider earmarking the $80,000 that was originally given to the Gateway Improvement Fund to now be allocated to the small business grants. The goal of the fund is to assist approximately 50 small businesses employing less than 10 full-time employees that include retail, restaurants, salons, fitness, dance studios, and other small businesses to follow safety guidelines during COVID-19 pandemic regulations. The grant would provide up to $1,500 per business to be used on their business through June 30th. It would be a grant that would be issued on a first-come, first-served basis, and the monies would be used to purchase, install, and update sanitizers, touchless door handles and foot handles, COVID Sneeze Screens, masks, PPEs, signage as it relates to COVID, table and chair rental, and fencing rental that our local businesses need to reopen. Applicants would be asked to use our local service providers: Emergent Safety Supply, A-Accurate Door, Arthur P.O'Hera, Whiskey Acres for Hand Sanitizer, Unique Party Rental, Blue Peak Tent Rental, and Con Printing. So I would like to ask if you would consider reallocating those funds tonight so that we could start this program right away.
Okay, do we have any reaction from the city council about the request?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I am, I am in support of using this to help these businesses out. I think it's something that we should consider as a city council, and I believe that, you know, it is, in a way, a very needed economic development fund at this time right now. And this would be a way that that could be used.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, this is Mike O'Brien. I would support Alan in that.
Yeah, I just was, I was going to make the notation to all of you that in the last year and a half to two years, thanks to the good efforts of the Batavia Chamber and Main Street, we have seen a major influx of new, very small businesses come into our downtown area specifically, and in some of the industrial areas too. But certainly, I think the downtown has been strengthened and made a much more attractive place because of this quick turnaround of new investment and new businesses in our downtown. And so when the idea was first proposed to me, I thought, you know, a little bit, you know, should we start moving some money around here? But the more I thought about this, and given, given the momentum that I think, thanks to Margaret, and Sherry, and all those involved in this situation, is going forth, that I really think, certainly with the boardwalks, shops, and everything else that we've got going, this is the right move at the right time. So I would go join with the other aldermen in wholeheartedly endorsing the idea that we go forth and do this. I guess we're going to need a motion if we want to do it.
I would make the motion that we take the money from that economic development fund that was going to be used for the Gateway Improvement Grants and turn that around into, I guess, a plan administered, is it going to be administered by the city, Laura, or will it be administered by Main Street?
And the Chamber. The three organizations will work together.
Okay. So as long as the city has the, I guess, the checkbook, then, as long as we're administering that, I'm okay with it.
Second.
I would second that, O'Brien.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the movement of the money. Any further discussion from the city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Alderman Callahan?
Yes, I would just like to say I fully agree with it also, because it is, on its face, an economic development grant, but it serves a greater purpose in that it's a public safety issue, and we're killing two birds with one stone with this money.
Okay. Anybody else?
Laura, I don't know if your mic is on.
Thank you, Alan. And in a third way it's helping is that the businesses from which these items are purchased are Batavia businesses as well. So kind of has the triple advantage.
Okay. Other comments? Ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uhr.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Chantet. You're breaking up. I didn't catch that. Chantet?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the vote is 14 yes, no, no's, and an absent, so the motion to amend it is approved. Any other comments from the Chamber? Are we done with the discussion?
No, I just, that was it. So I sincerely appreciate your consideration and your support of our business community. It helps us all live in a wonderful community. So I thank you very much. And we will get the communication out about this grant tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving to item number nine on the agenda, request for North River Street business owner to change the northern boundary of the North River Street closure area, which is Melissa Hartman from the Tea Tree. Is she on? Do we know? Or she's, I've talked to her. I can certainly talk about it. But I mean, is, is anybody else involved? When I talked to Melissa this past week, she indicated to me that she's a strong supporter of what we're trying to do on River Street. However, she's asking that, if nothing else, we allow for traffic to come down State Street to the bottom of the hill and make the turn going north on River Street, which would then allow for her to have the ability to have some cars parked either in front of her place or alongside of it. And she indicated to me she's got a number of older clients that are in need of not, they love to come to the Tea Tree because it's got a lot of things that many elderly people want, but they're not in a real good situation as far as being able to walk very far. And follow up to that, I assume there was some connection here, but I got a call from a lady in Glen Ellen on Sunday, who called me on my cell phone and told me that she had three friends of hers, and they were regular tenders and business people to the Tea Tree, but each one of them has a walker. And so they really would appreciate it if we would give some consideration to allowing people to get into that area and not have to walk a block or so to get there. So that's, and then I had a second call this afternoon to a lady that lives in Bartlett, kind of the same pitch. So that it's all out-of-town people. And I know there's a number of in-town people who are very impressed with Melissa's business. And I certainly, I guess I'm in favor of granting this because I can see the need for it. If anybody else has any contradictory ideas, I invite you to share them.
If I could ask you to give me the ability to share my screen, I just wanted to put the map up there.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have Sherry Wilcox, and I have tried to allow Melissa Hartman to speak as well right now. She's showing that she is self-muted. If she is able to unmute herself, there she goes. I think.
I am here. I'm here. Yes.
Beautiful.
Well, go ahead then.
Okay, so I do appreciate everything that you said, and I love that there are some ladies from Glen Ellen that had reached out to you. This is not long-term. This is more just for me to see how it goes over the next couple of weeks with shutting off the roads. So I am 100% on board with shutting down Brick-to-Brick at some point. I am just asking to have a couple of weeks to see if that curbside dies down a little bit, or if we're still in need of it. So it's not that I'm asking for this for a very long term. I'm just asking to continue it because we do have a lot of customers that are not comfortable coming in the shop yet. So we are still using that curbside service quite often. I do see it dying down. I think it will. I just, closing it down right away, I'm just asking if we can have that flow through for a little bit longer, just to see how the outdoor dining even goes. And then if you guys come to me, or if I will physically see it, that it's a need to cover Brick-to-Brick, I'm all for it, and we will find another means for curbside. So I was just asking for a short-term route for my curbside, just to see how everything goes in the next couple of weeks.
So one of the things that I would mention is that while we have applied for IDOT approval, we actually aren't expecting to get that, like a two-week period of time might be the perfect period of time, because right now, the street is one-way, and so it will continue to be one-way until we receive the IDOT approval.
Okay, and that's perfect. If this isn't going to be shut down completely for just a couple more weeks, then that makes complete sense to me. I just needed a couple more weeks to see where we're at as far as curbside. I will have to hire extra people. It's closed off from Brick-to-Brick. Again, that's on me, not on the city. But I do want you guys to know that in a time like this, it's not as though we are making as much as we were before. Bringing on extra employees, I would love to. I just need to make sure that it is a smart thing to do. If there's people in the shop, I, parking lots, or the garages across the street, until those people are gone from the shop. So I will need. Go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Mike O'Brien, I was an advocate for Brick-to-Brick, a strong advocate, but I'd be inclined to accommodate Melissa in this and see how it develops.
I agree. This is Abby, and I, after seeing the density of tables that we got from the Park District, which was so nice, and how many people did come out over the weekend, I think, especially in these first couple of weeks, I don't think it's a bad decision to stop it, to stop the road closure at State for the time being, and let it, and let all the businesses adapt, let Missy's business evolve as it's going to evolve, see how popular River Street really becomes as a destination, and continue to modify it from there. But I'm in support of keeping it at State, the closure at State for the time being.
This is Nick. Can I say a word?
Sure.
I think this lends itself to what we talked about last week about being nimble. I think it's good that we requested IDOT permission to extend as far north as we might possibly want, but that doesn't mean we have to open it up right then, you know, use it the whole way. And I think we monitor, we may never have to open past State, but let's hope that this becomes so popular that it'll be a public safety issue that we need to. But we don't, you know, it's still about monitoring and staying nimble.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yes, I also spoke with Missy over the last week, and it was just exactly that. We're all trying to make sure, just like Nick said, being nimble is possible. And depending on how this actually turns out, there are other options that I know Missy brought up of, it doesn't need to be closed other than the weekends at times, even if it does extend up Brick-to-Brick. It can go to State during Monday through Thursday, and that would be fine, too. I think the consensus of what everybody is trying to do is to make sure that all businesses are heard on this, and that everybody has a say in all the retail and the service businesses, such as the PT location. We're all just trying to make this work, because this is, this is new territory for everybody.
Anybody else? Do we want to make a motion then to change our proposal here?
I move that we will, when we receive authorization from IDOT, that we will close to State Street and evaluate at a further time.
Second. Beck.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Beck for the, to accept the IDOT closure, or when it comes through, to take it from Wilson to State, and then we will study from State North and make a further decision after we study the issues that are at hand. Anybody have anything to add to that? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet? Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. All right, we will move then to item number ten, which is motion to approve the bid and sale of land at 919 Smith Court to Dale and Melinda Rudy in the amount of $12,083 and in-kind services. And this comes from the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, again, another one of those in uncharted territory. We are finally dealing with the removal of 919 Smith Court. The city has placed this out for bid to have the sale of the vacant lot at 919 with the new sidewalk through that parcel. The property is located between Smith Court on the west side and Carlisle on the east. The sale was authorized back in January, and the bid for this parcel was the adjacent property owner Dale and Melinda Rudy. They have offered $12,083 of in-kind electrical services, which means they will have agreed to pay for the connection of their home at 921 Carlisle and the adjacent home at 934 Carlisle onto the city's electrical utility. This will allow for the removal of overhead electrical lines in that property, and the bid was acceptable in the form and substance. Staff has recommended the approval. And we can agree to do so, or we can decline this bid. If we do approve it, it must meet a two-thirds vote. Scott, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't have anything else. That summarizes everything correctly.
I would just encourage the City Council to hope to approve this. This really does clean up some issues down there that have direct impact on the ability of kids to walk Augustus in school there from Mill Creek subdivision, and I think it just will make for a much nicer, cleaner way of doing things, and certainly will be an enhancement to the surrounding neighborhood, and I think it's a win-win for everybody involved. Any other comments?
And Mr. Mayor, if this passes, we would be selling to some great property owners who have taken care of that parcel over the years with the other side neighbors, too. So it's going to a good home. With that, I move we approve the bid and sale of the lot at 919 Smith Court to Dale and Melinda Rudy for $12,083 of in-kind electrical connection services.
Second, Wolf.
Approved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the bid for 919 Smith Court to Dale and Melinda Rudy for $12,083 in in-kind services. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Insigne?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet? 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 Uh, Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
One more time, Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That's fourteen.
Okay, so the motion for the approval of the 919 Smith Court property is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Thank you. Okay, under, the next item eleven's already been acted on under the consent agenda, so we will go to item twelve, which is ordinance twenty dash thirty-five, amending the official zoning map for a GC general commercial district with PD planned development overlay district at 300 North Randall Road and 1899 and 1990 McKee Street for Menards Incorporated for their expansion. Alderman Callahan, do you have this one?
Thank you, Your Honor. This one and the next one, resolution twenty dash zero seven seven, both deal with the expansion at Menards and the planned overlay. There is a lot of moving pieces to this, and I think, do we have Drew on to explain some of the highlights on this one? Or is Scott?
I don't think Drew is on tonight.
Okay, he did, he did a good summary last week.
Yeah, essentially what this is, is this is a planned development that would allow for an expansion of the Menards store. It would incorporate the existing detention basin on the north side of McKee Street, and it would incorporate a new piece of land on the south side of McKee that is east of the Raising Cane's Restaurant, so the detention would be moved across the street. It would allow for an expansion of the Menards store, as well as allow for a accessory building of around 20,000 square feet. So it would allow for the enhancements and expansion of the Menards, and would retain them within the community for a much longer time because of that. So there's a lot of detail in that plan, and then the ordinance, there's a few conditions of approval that are related to that, including creation of a backup special service area in the case that they do not maintain the basin. And then there are some modifications to the landscape plans, and so on and so forth. So a lot, a lot of detail with that. And then the second companion item with that is the re-subdivision of the property that would allow for all the properties that Menards owns to be incorporated under one single lot.
Any questions?
I know the Menards representative was here last week, and he was able to answer questions. I don't know if he is on tonight and wants to say anything.
Anybody from Menards on the line with us?
Yep, Tyler Edwards from Menards here. Hi, everybody.
Hello. Is there anything else you wish to add to the council?
Only if there's questions. That was a good summary. You know, we are adding some features to this store to make it like all the other ones. A lot of that's warehousing and storage space. We think we have a good plan, and cooperation with the city engineering staff to work out the stormwater technicalities, and get a project that's going to allow us to expand and stay here for a long time.
And I think, as was pointed out, this was part of the corporate strategy for, that goes along with the revitalization and the expansions for Menards, and the work that they have been doing actually looks phenomenal. With that, I move we will approve ordinance twenty dash thirty-five, amending the official zoning map for the general commercial district with a planned development overlay district.
Second, Meitzler.
Here we have a motion and second for the approval of ordinance twenty dash thirty-five, amending the official zoning cord, zoning map for a G3 general commercial district with PD planned development overlay district at 300 North Randall and 1899 and 1990 McKee Street for the Menards expansion. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty dash thirty-five is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving to item thirteen, which is resolution twenty dash zero seven seven R, approving a final plat of subdivision for Menards Batavia, second re-subdivision at 300 North Randall Road by Menards Incorporated. Any discussion? Oh, not Alderman Callahan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe this was sufficiently summarized by Scott on this, so I move we approve resolution twenty dash zero seven seven dash R, approving the final plat of subdivision for Menards second subdivision.
Second, Meitzler.
Okay, motion and second for the approval of resolution twenty dash zero seven seven R for the Menards second re-subdivision. Any further discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Resolution twenty dash zero seven seven R is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving to item fourteen on our agenda, which is resolution twenty dash zero six four dash R, authorizing execution of a contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for the Area Three Stormwater Separations Phase Three in an amount not to exceed $1,979,766. Alderman O'Brien, do you have this one?
Actually, Your Honor, I have it. The City Service. Thank you. This is basically going to be the third phase or final phase of the new sewer, storm sewer system, as part of the sewer separation on the west side of town. This is in Ward Two. The area, I believe, is along Harrison, Jackson, Morton, and Garfield, where this is going to be happening. And so basically where it was done earlier, in earlier phases, this will be going west and south from there. So this is just another one of our things that we identified back in, I think, fifteen and sixteen, where we identified all the problems that we had with sewer backups and drainage concerns, time and time again, just another step in solving all those issues out there. Does anybody have any questions?
If I may, Alan?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
I want to say, this is a great deal of money we're spending, and I believe it's money well-spent. The separation of sewers, I believe, is important. It definitely lightens the load on our wastewater treatment facility. And, you know, as you said, it is preventing now backups, sewage backups, into people's homes. So this is a long time coming. I'm glad we're getting this done, and it'll be, I'm sure, the people in Area Three welcome it. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Alan, this is Elliot, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
The resolution, as it's written in the attachment, speaks to $2,680, not the 1.9. Can we get clarification?
That is a 10% contingency. Let me find the actual verbiage here. It's a 10% contingency to allow for change orders within the approved amount. So it will be $2,680.
Thank you.
And just for another point here for everybody, the two, there's two loans that we approved in the consent agenda tonight, one for $850,000, and one for $860,000 to cover the majority of this project, and the low-interest loans. So if there are no other questions, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty dash sixty-four dash R, authorizing execution of a contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for the Area Three Stormwater Sewer Separation Phase Three in the amount not to exceed $2,680.
Second, Callahan.
O'Brien.
Moved by Wolf, second by Callahan for the approval of resolution twenty dash zero six four dash R. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, one more point to make, too, just for public knowledge and for everybody else. The engineer's estimate originally on this is actually about $250,000 higher than what we're actually paying to have this done. So the bids came in a lot, a lot better.
Now, we have been very well-served by this whole project, and I want to give a lot of credit to our own engineering staff in-house in the city. They've done, they've been out there on the field, and I've gotten some very positive comments from the residents out there who have already had the work done in front of their property, and the results they're seeing. So it is working very well out there from all reports that I'm getting. No further comments. I'd ask Kirk to call the roll on resolution twenty dash zero six four dash R.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Urr?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, that motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving then to item number, see, that was fourteen, fifteen, which is resolution twenty dash seventy-nine dash R, authorizing a contract with WGI Incorporated to provide parking consultation review services on behalf of the city of Batavia for One Washington Place. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
I have that, Your Honor, thank you. This is for the city, we are in the process of negotiating an amendment to the TIF redevelopment agreement with One Wash, One North Washington LLC, related to developers' construction of the multi-story building at the corner of Wilson and North Washington Street. One of the things that will be part of that project is a parking garage, and said parking garage will be owned by the city, and this is for design review services on that parking garage that we will be owning, so we want to make sure that that is within what we would want to be able to maintain and own into the future. And WGI will provide all that information for us, and the amount on it is $20,500. And we do have funds budgeted in that account for professional services related to the TIF. Questions?
This is Mark. I raised my, raised my objections last week when we talked about this, but as I was rereading that contract, I'm going to have to abstain from voting on this because I have good acquaintances with the gentleman from WGI that's the other side of the signature.
Very good. Thank you for disclosing that. Anybody else? Do you want to make a motion then, Alderman Wolf?
I would make the motion that we approve resolution twenty dash seventy-nine dash R, authorizing a contract with WGI Incorporated to provide parking consultant review services on behalf of the city for the One Washington Place project.
Second, O'Brien.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of resolution twenty dash zero seven nine dash R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Abstain.
Saron.
Nay.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller. Miller. Rizotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
No.
Danzett.
Aye.
I have 9 yes, 4 no, 1 abstention.
Motion for Resolution 20-79-R is approved?
Yes.
Okay, 16, weren't we talking about that going to be covered in the consent agenda, but then we took it off? Is that what we did? I thought maybe, anyway. 16 is Resolution 20-073-R, execution of an independent contractor agreement for economic development consultant. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, right here. So since 2013, the city has retained the services of Chris Aiston to help us with marketing and additional services. He gave his verbal notice at the end of last year, or, sorry, the end of last May to say that he was going to be stepping down and retiring. But as it turns out, with the recent impacts of COVID-19, the city decided not to go forward temporarily with some expenditures. One of those included hiring a business development manager. So we recognize that there are a lot of tasks that need to be done, especially regarding the TIF districts and lieutenant's on One Washington Place, that staff is recommending that we execute an independent contractor agreement with Chris Aiston's company so we can continue on with the city. And we discussed it extensively in committee and came to the conclusion that it makes sense to continue to retain the services. So if there's no discussion, I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 20-73-R.
Second, Wolf.
Moved by Alderman. Danzett, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Resolution 20-73-R for the independent contractor agreement for economic development consultant. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, yeah, I believe that was Wolf that seconded, not me.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question related to the scope of his work. And we were talking about, since we do not have the economic development piece of this due to the budget cuts for the time being, and we felt it necessary to make sure that that gap didn't completely go out the door. It was maybe brought up that he was solely working on the TIF re-TIF, but there is an additional part because if the TIF re-TIF does not pass, which we have not voted for yet, he would also be in for the redeveloping that parcel for a new opportunity. Is that not correct as it states in the memo? That would be part of the scope.
So I would say that it is within the scope, but there's also a timeframe as well. So we've got the November 30th date in there or in such time as we determine whether the sixth TIF can be established, since the city has a longstanding and very good relationship with the consultants. If the scope of the work were to change to that, I think as long as it's within the timeframe that he is looking at, that that might be something that he is amenable to staying on for.
Right, and that was just what I wanted to make sure because there was a question that the belief was it was solely for one purpose, one purpose only. It's not, and it is with the understanding that this is a close-ended contract for six months.
Correct. So I think really it's a position, it's a contract that's focused on that particular redevelopment site, not necessarily just the establishment of the TIF.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other questions? We're calling the roll then on the motion.
Danzett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to 17, the administration report. Laura.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Batavia School District. On Friday, they organized a phone call of all of the different Batavia governmental bodies coordinating out all of our individual reopening efforts as we moved into Phase 3 of the Restore Illinois Plan, not only helping us all be aware of what the other was doing, but that it was consistent as well, and that was very helpful. The city has received a shipment of medical masks that we are able to make available through distribution. We're planning an upcoming event so that if we have residents who are finding it difficult to obtain face coverings for themselves or for family members, we are planning on doing a drive-through event and watch the city's website and our weekly news and our social media pages. More details about this event will be provided. That supply of masks will also assist us to make sure that all of the city employees, as they return to their ordinary schedules, are and are present in the office more often. We'll have a sufficient supply for that, as well as this weekend's farmer's market, which was just an amazing event with hundreds and hundreds of people attending. We also had masks available to distribute to anyone who might have come to the farmer's market and didn't bring a face covering with them. But I can tell you that I was walking around trying to give these face coverings away, and we had nearly 100% compliance of people who were coming to the farmer's market already had a face covering. It was usually only people who happened upon it and did not know that it was happening that day and might have been out exercising on a bicycle, walking trail, who needed one. But we're happy that we have a very sufficient supply throughout this season to provide to anyone that needs one. I would also like to recognize our police departments and our fire departments. Last night, in response to the demonstrations and civil unrest in the city of Aurora, the Batavia Police Department sent eight officers for mutual aid and assistance, and the Batavia Fire Department sent an ambulance and a crew. As you probably saw from the live feeds in the newscast, it was a very tense and volatile situation that went on long into the night. Thankfully, all of our officers returned without incidents and without injury as well. So just want to recognize them for their efforts in helping out our neighboring city. Also, our police department, in response to some complaints about people driving too fast through neighborhoods, have been increasing our targeted traffic enforcement patrols because there's a higher traffic volume out there now that we've moved into Phase Restore Illinois Plan. And also, our portable speed awareness signs have recently come back from maintenance, and we are deploying those in key areas to better understand what people's habits are in some reported hotspots. And shortly, we will be getting a supply of our slowdown signs so that we can renew that campaign as more and more people are spending time outdoors. We want to make sure that when they cross the road and whatnot, that people are driving at speeds which are safe enough for that to occur and to share the roadway with both pedestrians and with bicycles at the same time. In community and economic development, the Building Division is actively receiving and reviewing and inspecting permits to create and to expand outdoor seating at our bars and restaurants so that they can benefit from the opportunities created by the opening of those types of areas under the Restore Illinois Plan. As of this Friday, we've got seven permits which have been filed and are in the process of review and issuance. And we, in addition to that, we've received many inquiries from other businesses, and people are really being creative about trying to find a way to provide more seating so that patrons can enjoy our many businesses downtown. Last Friday, saw the launch of our three outdoor dining areas that have been created. The first of those is, there are approximately 18 table, picnic tables, which have been placed on North River Street. And in that area, patrons may carry out both food and alcoholic beverages from neighboring businesses, and they can use these public tables to sit down and enjoy those things. Alcohol is restricted only to that area on North River Street, and open alcohol in containers may not be taken away from that area. The city also provides two other open-air dining areas. Alcohol is not allowed to be consumed at those areas which are located off of North River Street. The first is over on the Washington, the One Washington Place redevelopment site. So that would be located exactly east of Boca Ditos on East Wilson Street. Also have four tables, which are right here next to City Hall, right on Houston Street as it comes up to North Island Avenue. So any of those tables as well can be used for your alfresco dining enjoyments in our downtown. From Public Works, the utility work on Prairie Street is back on schedule, and the project continues to progress as planned. Our anticipated completion is late this fall. Mainstream construction is tracking a little bit behind schedule due to underground utility conflicts. We think there are still possibilities to gain some ground later in the project, and the completion of the project prior to the onset of winter unfortunately remains a little uncertain at this time. The 2020 Area 3 project is scheduled to commence within the next few days, and hydrant flushing is underway on the west side of town. This process improves water quality and enables our crews to inspect the operating condition of each and every fire hydrant in town. I would like to recognize the effort of our street department and our public properties and services crews. After the city council made the decision for the closure of North River Street as an alfresco dining area, those two departments made incredible efforts in just two days to pull that off. It was a lot more than moving around some picnic tables. It takes quite an effort to redesign the street for one-way traffic, to make all of the signage that needed to be posted, and to put that in place as well, and finding ways that those tables can be safely placed, and to utilize some of the streetscape elements, such as the big, heavy granite planters, to be placed strategically to protect diners from that one-way traffic as well. So really like to compliment both of those staffs on the way they were able to pull off that project. We really appreciate it, and it was used a lot this weekend. I think people really enjoyed that opportunity. Communications, I just wanted to let people know that 3,000 households in the city of Batavia will be receiving a postcard. That postcard has a number for you to use to fill out a community survey. Those are the targeted sample of households, and once those cards have gone out in the next coming weeks, we will also be issuing a website address. So if anyone else in town also wants to fill out our community survey, and we encourage as many people as possible to please fill out that survey, because the information that's provided there helps do a couple of things. It helps the city council to structure the next iteration of their strategic plan. It helps to prioritize where funds are spent, given the vast number of different projects that we could undertake. It focuses on those that are identified as most important to the community. And this year, because we have chosen to go with a nationwide survey, we have a unique opportunity to be able to compare ourselves to similar-sized towns, towns with similar attributes to ourselves, to check and see where we stand versus other communities of our type. And we created a webpage to collect all the information about the great programs that Margaret was talking about that are collected under the title of Batavia Reconnected. So we are just about ready to launch that page, and we encourage all of our residents to visit that page to find out how you can reconnect with our businesses so that we can make sure that they're able to survive this time and thrive in the future. Lastly, this information is posted on our website as well as on our social media. I just to let everyone know that there is a protest that we have received notice of, and it is scheduled for June 3rd, that's this coming Wednesday. It is from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. This is not a city-sanctioned protest. The application, which was filed for permission for the event, we denied on the basis that it was not timely filed, and it is a type of event that would not conform to the governor's, the Phase 3 requirements of gatherings of no more than 10 people. And so we felt it necessary to deny the application for the, what we call the parade event, is what the application is called. However, the city of Batavia recognizes, respects, and must, I, the fact that the organizers of the event have a right to peaceful assembly and to exercise their right to freedom of speech, so their events, if they so choose, will likely go forward in that event. However, the organizer, I would like to say, has cooperated with the city and is in communication with our police department, and we are trying to cooperate on providing some ideas on how the event could be carried off as safely as possible. However, if people, we expect that there will be a lot of people downtown during this event, and so if you would wish to choose to avoid that, you might not want to be driving through downtown during those hours, and then also businesses in the area may make the decision about whether they wish to remain open during the time of that event as well. However, the city of Batavia and the Batavia Police Department and Fire Department want to assure everyone that we will do everything within our efforts to make sure that this is a very peaceful and orderly event. The organizer herself wanted to make sure that people understand that it is a sit-in protest and that it is not a march. And so that's my, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura?
This is Mark. I don't have a question. I have one more comment. I also wanted to call out a thank you to from the Plenio family that they posted online during the challenging time with their time with their son during the, um, past several months because of the, the bomb threats and everything, um, related to that, and I, I know the family and in my communications with them, they were always very, uh, thankful of how respectful the police department was of their family and of the process that they went through for that, and I know they mentioned that online as well, that they, um, were very happy with the way they were treated by the police department. So, it's a great call out, especially in these times of how respectful the police actually are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's go to committee reports. Uh, Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
My computer is frozen. Can you come back to me?
I can come back. How about Government Services, Alderman Chansett?
Your Honor, no.
All right, uh, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, tomorrow night, we're going to discuss, uh, feeder installation to, uh, Cook Road.
Okay. Uh, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Uh, no report tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Callahan, are you back in?
I am. It did unfreeze. There, um, I was not sure who the discussion under Parklet's is tomorrow. Um, Laura, do you have, am I going to direct that one under Community Development? I was not sure on that one. That was the one I just had to look.
Your microphone's not on, Laura.
I'm sorry, I didn't pick a committee for that. I wasn't, I wasn't exactly sure, um, whether it was City Services or whether it was Community Development, so either one is, is fine as long as you two, um, committee chairman agree to that.
Okay.
I think that could be a committee, committee of the whole discussion.
Yeah, that should, probably should be. Anybody else? Under Committee Reports? Do we have anything under other business? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Kind of under what Laura was saying about the sit-in for tomorrow, and I know it's probably going to create a lot of angst based on what we're seeing in the community, but I think it goes, it should not be, uh, understated that we, as a community, have full faith and confidence in our police department and our fire, that they are made of, of some of the most outstanding professional men and women, and we can't let fear of protesters that are violent take away the First Amendment rights for those who wish to protest peacefully. Otherwise, they're being deprived of their rights to speak, and that would be a theft by the looters also. We're also protecting their Fifth Amendment rights that those that are sitting in, we have no doubt that they will act peacefully as they have stated, because the Fifth Amendment says they're innocent until proven guilty, and so I have to believe that, and our department will be ready for those concerns, uh, without a doubt.
Anybody else? Under Committee Reports?
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, you know, I, I appreciate Marty's comments, and I would say that, uh, our police department will act within societal ethics. Uh, I think across the nation that, you know, the overwhelming majority of police officers act in accordance with the law and that every man is equal to his due rights. Uh, the, the, the video that, that sparked it all was, was deeply disturbing. It was, uh, it, it, it made me very angry, as I'm sure it made most people very angry, as you can see, but, uh, what's going on across the nation, I don't believe is, uh, i- is, is the peaceful protesters. I mean, they have their, their, their First Amendment, their First Amendment rights. I- it's just, um, perhaps anarchists that are, that are strolling about, but, uh, I agree with Marty wholeheartedly that, you know, we need to let people speak, and, uh, and I believe, I have every confidence in our police department and fire department that they will, you know, humanely control the situation.
Anybody else? Okay, let's roll to the mayor's report. Uh, obviously, I would like to, number one, thank those beyond the council who've just made your comments about the, the whole freedom of speech thing and the conflicts that we may or may not have as we entertain some type of conversation in the community to this. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, in my years in office here, today has been perhaps one of the more memorable ones, because I have never, ever in any way came anywhere near talking to as many angry citizens or people who were openly afraid of any further activity about this in our community, given what they had seen happen last night in the city of Aurora. I mean, that sent the ultimate fear into the minds of a lot of different people, business people. I've had several tell me they want to close their businesses up for two or three days. I've been asked to about invoking curfews. While we were sitting here, I just got a notice from Kane County that the Aurora Township has invoked a curfew on the city of Aurora for at least tonight, maybe tomorrow. Uh, there's a lot of stuff going on here, and I, I appreciate everybody's ability to have freedom of speech, and I totally respect that, and I, I certainly share the anguish of what I saw happen up in Minneapolis. I, you know, I, there was a lot of issue with that whole thing, and I don't think it should be any way, shape, or form, uh, disavowed or, or not dealt with, but on the same token, I think it's our job here to maintain the highest degree of security and, and sincerity of service to our citizens that we can possibly give them. That being said, I want to say that last night, uh, I went out, rode around this town and at a, at a time, I'll say after ten o'clock at night, and I want to tell you that as the mayor of this town, I could not have been more proud or pleased by what I saw was the appearance of Batavia police, uh, all over the place, and in places where I think we were wanting to maintain a very high profile, we did that, and I have every reason to believe that that kind of appearance and patrol will continue on for the days ahead, and that we will have, as you, most of you, several of you have already said, we are going to maintain a very strict, uh, occurrence that among all else, anybody that wants to come into Batavia and do anything, the watchword is peaceful, and you better be prepared to be peaceful, and if you're not peaceful, uh, we will deal with you in the strongest possible ways we can under the constraints of the law, and I'm not afraid to say that, that I would certainly not be disavowed to go into the state's attorney's office and targeting some people if they came into this town and did something that we were not at all happy about. So, I just wanted word go forth that we're not going to sit here and let people come in here and be unpeaceful. Uh, peaceful is the watchword in Batavia at the moment, and that's the way we intend to keep it, but I just want to conclude by my remarks by just, uh, taking my hat off and appreciation to the Batavia Police Department and its administration under Chief Uhl and to the Batavia Fire Department under Chief Dyke, because the last few weeks with the coronavirus and now with this, uh, whole issue coming out at us from, uh, Minnesota, uh, we have been challenged and, and, and called upon on a lot of different set of circumstances. On the fire side, the ambulance has spiked its responses with a whole bunch of people who seem to have some type of, uh, mental problem going on, and that's gotten to be quite a problematic thing for the tri-city ambulance to deal with. We, you had to take some out, kind of outside steps to bring in some outside people to support us, uh, in those particular calls, because there's just a volume of them and they're, they're, the issues that get thrown out there are very time-consuming at a time when we really can't tie up paramedic, uh, responding ambulances for two or three hours to sit someplace and talk to somebody about what they're mad about or whatever the re- issue may be. So, uh, we are doing a lot of stuff. Obviously, all this comes with a price, but I don't think there's any price that, uh, we should anyway balk at, given what we're trying to do here to make people in Batavia feel secure in their homes and their businesses. So, that's our pri- primary function, and if you hear various things said about us that we're not being cooperative or whatever have you, uh, we, we, tonight, we've had to take down, there was a notification that, that the police department and the mayor had, uh, incurred in support of this, uh, sit-in on Wednesday, and we, I asked that we take that down, because that, nobody ever talked to me in, in any place today about that, other than I get a notice from several very upset cer- citizens literally screaming at me on the phone, and I've saved some of them. If any of the members like the city council would like to hear some very upset people, come on down to my office and I'll play the phones for you. Uh, it's, I've never had an experience like this ever before, and we've really got some people that are scared, are very seriously scared in this town, and I just want everybody to know that we're trying to do everything possible, uh, to keep things peaceful, and that's the watchword here. So, heaven help you if you come into this town and think you're not going to be peace-abiding, because, uh, we will do everything we can to chase you down and prosecute you to the fullest extent of the law if you come in here and decide that you don't want to behave yourself. So, I guess I, I want, just want that word to go forth, that that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's the city's policy. Uh, we are monitoring, and I'm talking with Chief Uhl on a daily basis. If he feels that there should be a curfew issued any time in the next couple of days, I will not hesitate to do it. Uh, I think right now, from what I see in the Batavia Police Department, their job is phenomenal as far as trying to keep an eye on things and keep an eye on people, so I appreciate all the good efforts that are going forth. So, that being said, uh, we want, need a motion to go into executive session for a few minutes. Would somebody care to do that for us?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Somebody want to say something?
Yes, this is Alderman Miller.
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanted to echo, um, your sentiments of, of peaceful protesting if you're going to go out in Batavia. I wanted to let citizens know that, um, if you are out and about and you see people that are not from our town, and they are not carrying the message in a peaceful manner, to please inform the, um, law enforcement of Batavia to handle that message, uh, to handle those people, because the message of change and the message of what we can do to help, um, change some of the injustices, injustices in, in our society, um, does not need to be hijacked by people from the outside. The message needs to stay on point. The peaceful protesting needs to stay on point, and if you are going to be out and about and you're going to be causing, um, disruption, our citizens need to take a stand and inform the law enforcement so that that can be shut down, so the message stays on point. I also want to say that the police department from day one, I have seen, has been absolutely amazing in this community. The interaction they have with everyone from little kids to older adults, to every single ethnicity, has been amazing, and I want to commend them for doing the things that they need to do in a very, um, best practice, best management practices, and being just human beings to the people and the citizens that they service, and they are, along with many other departments, um, a, a, a shining light of what needs to be done from law enforcement in this country.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, entertain a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved.
Move by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Rizotto. Uh, Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Eitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Euer?
Hi.
Laron?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rizotto?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopf?
Hi.
Chansett?
Hi.
Walt?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Motion for the executive session is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. We're going to take a couple-minute recess here while we reset some of the technology for this, so just be, bear with us for just a couple of seconds here.
So, uh, what we actually do is we conclude, um, this meeting, and so we will lose all of the, um, attendees, and, um, everyone should, uh, re-log on to the executive session using the link that Howard provided this afternoon.
Okay, very good. Meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you.